I think she had Duncan Donalds.
I don't think McDonald's. I don't know, my husband gets it.
It is to somebody.
I guess, my husband gets it every morning on the way to work, but I don't.
You remember well art, because art is.
That's what he says.
Yeah.
Y'all remember coming to my brother's house.
Him, did you call anybody?
Or sandwiches when y'all were little. Your mother used to cross y'all, put y'all across the street.
I've been drinking some.
And you'd come down the alley behind Capitelli's house and I'd be waiting on the corner.
It's in a yellow package.
I don't doubt it.
I remember your sister, she was such a little girl.
No, it's like a, it's called like, uh.
Where's she living?
Castilio something?
Yes, like that.
Uh, near San Francisco, a place called Antioch. That's where it was called Berber.
Mr. Chair, are you gonna call me?
That's gonna be up to the chair.
It's one till. Oh, it is seven.
It is seven.
It is seven o'clock.
How can you tell?
In fact, it's one minute after.
Alright, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna call to order the, oh, what is the date today? The sixteenth of May, two thousand sixteen, meeting of the, uh, City of Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board. I will begin with a roll call. It's seven o'clock PM, by the way.
Mr. Vincent?
Here.
Mr. Carr? Mr. Parker? Mr. Seaman? Mr. Geolosis? Ms. St. Arnold?
Here.
Mr. Haas? Ms. Protos?
Here.
Thank you. Well, with three members of the board here, we don't have a quorum, we can't conduct any business. Um, and I apologize for that, we, we generally, this doesn't happen very often. Um, but we, you know, legally, we can't do anything without a quorum.
You need a, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Exactly.
Before you, before you adjourn, is there any way that we can move these applications to your next available agenda so we don't have to re-advertise them, um, or?
For next month?
For next month, because essentially, these are already on track, some of these are actually already scheduled to go to BOC.
Alright, uh, is that gonna be alright, or with the attorney that this happens?
Let's give it a try.
Alright, so move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But please check with the attorney first, so the applicants and residents here don't come and they can't work on, and there's no reason, uh, please. I would, sir, I would wait until the meeting to make sure they all get it.
You can give them to Ms.
Get it to the planner then.
Okay. And, uh, so all those items that are selected for today on the agenda, uh, will be continued or deferred to, uh, the next regular meeting of our board, which would be next month. And again, I apologize to those of you that, uh, came here, like I said, this rarely happens, but.
Okay.
Uh, without a, a quorum, we have no power to act on anything.
Okay. Okay.
Do we know the date of the meeting next month?
The twentieth.
June the twentieth?
June the twentieth.
June twentieth, two thousand sixteen.
No hurricane that night.
No hurricane.
Okay.
We, yes ma'am.
That, that is the, for the BOC, what will happen is that, um, the board of, the Bound Board of County Commissioners, it's the city commission, they will actually have to continue this hearing as well, because Planning and zoning actually has to make a formal recommendation, so that date will also change, it will announce that date at the next Planning and Zoning meeting if that application moves, moves forward, because I'll have to continue those as well.
And if you have any, uh, best.
Uh-oh.
Well.
A letter to the, uh, BOC and to us.
Uh-oh.
We just adjourned.
We just adjourned.
Just adjourned.
Alright. Seven o'clock.
Hey, I've gotta work, I can't take.
I understand.
Well.
Was actually excused. And still came, so that's good.
Your wife will love you more tonight.
What do we, what do we do now, Ms. Attorney? They didn't know.
Um, we'll have to check with our attorney, I'd be happy to reconvene and, and call it back to order, uh, if Mr. Carr's gonna be here for a few minutes to, or whatever.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, well.
I, I mean, I didn't hear, I mean, there was a first and a second for German, but the motion didn't pass, though.
She didn't have roll call yet.
Okay.
That's right.
That's right, okay, well, um, then we will go ahead and, now that Mr. Carr's here, the record reflect that we do have a quorum, uh, let's go ahead and, uh, have the judicial, or quasi-judicial announcement and swearing in of anyone who wants to speak, so that, listen carefully to our attorney, read this, uh, information, and if you do intend to speak, uh, be sure when it's time to stand up and, and be sworn, uh, to give testimony or evidence tonight. Thank you.
This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Planning and Zoning Board acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances, in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Now, because there's not a full board tonight, any applicant that would like to defer their application until the next meeting where there is a full board has the option to do so, anyone wishing to do so should do that now. If not, anyone wishing to speak this evening to testify, please stand and raise your right hand. That would include all applicants and anyone wishing to testify on behalf or against somebody. And please raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I would like to ask the attorney a question. Were legally okay because we didn't have roll call to come back and reconvene?
Yes, ma'am.
I just didn't want, I don't want anything technically to happen, not knowing how the vote is going to go.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is, um, number three, application number sixteen dash zero six, annexation for Peter Fisher. The address of sixteen oh nine Dixie Highway, it's a request to voluntarily annex approximately point one two four acres into the city of, uh, Tarpon Springs city limits.
Chairman Vincent, can I, can I make a request? Is it possible for us to actually take the applications out of order on the agenda, realizing that the majority of the folks that are here tonight are here to speak on the third item, which is, um, application sixteen thirty eight, conditional use for the home occupation, so that we don't hold these folks up doing, um, basically city-run applications beginning at the meeting?
Uh, yes, we can take them out of order.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's do that, please.
In order to accommodate, uh, the folks here, we'll go ahead and take number five at this time, application number sixteen dash three eight. It's a conditional use for home occupation, request for conditional use approval for a home occupation, uh, which is pet sitting in the R seventy A zoning district located at twelve oh six East Boyer Street, and we'll begin with the staff report.
Thank you. Again, this is a conditional use application to allow for a home occupation of pet sitting in the R seventy A single-family residential zoning district. The applicant is Tina Stern, um, the owner of the property is Trudy B. Lacy. Currently, the property is under contract for, uh, sale to the applicant. Again, the location is twelve oh six East Boyer Street, that proj, that property is zone R seventy A and has a future land use of RU or residential urban. The applicant and her husband have placed a contract on the property for twelve, um, oh six East Boyer Street. The applicant plans to make this her home residence and would like approval for a conditional use to run a pet sitting office out of her home. The pet sitting business would be limited to indoor cats only, and there would be no retail sales of any kind of the property. The applicant would pet sit for a maximum of nine cats at once on the property at twelve oh six East Boyer Street. The applicant is proposing in addition to the home to isolate the cats into a sunroom area that will be constructed between the existing home and the detached garage. Just a, a little bit aside to this, the what's in the report, since this report was written, we met with the building official and the applicant and the fire marshal, they can't do a sunroom in the sense of a traditional sunroom, it would actually have to be a constructed, um, addition to their home that may have glass windows in it, but it will have standard walls, whether those walls are block or wood or of, of a paneling system, that would be up to the applicant, but it would have some solid walls between those windows, it wouldn't be a traditional sunroom like we think of a sunroom here in Florida. It has to actually be a structure where they can have ventilation and proper management for, um, to have animals in there. As a result, the applicant is aware of that, Anthony, our building official, could not come to the meeting, so I just wanted to include that information, because it's a little bit more information than we had at the time of the staff report, the staff report was written, so that addition would be a, a little bit more substantial than just a sunroom addition. It would be a real room that they're actually gonna create for this use onto that property between that detached garage and the existing block house, both the detached garage and the house are block construction.
Will it be attached to the house?
Yes, it will be full, basically, it will attach the detached garage to the existing house, there'll be one continuous building.
But will it be attached to the residence?
Yes. It'll be attached on both sides.
Those an extension of the house?
Correct. Um, with that, basically, what the applicant is asking for is a twenty-five by thirty-foot, um, addition, a maximum of eight hundred and seventy-five square feet, this meets the requi, the minimum, the maximum allowances in the Land Development Code, under the conditional use, they can ask for up to twenty-five percent of the total square footage as area that's dedicated just to this use. That includes any office area that she would have, any area where these, where the animals will be housed, and any other accessory pieces that she has just for the business, that are just for the business. It's with the whole house, doesn't get converted, it's just that area. The applicant will control for traffic at the, at the residence using appointments. Since this is a sole proprietorship, the applicant will need to restrict customer traffic so as to limit not only the negative impacts on the neighbors, but also so she can pay attention to the, the customers to provide the attention that they need, uh, for drop-offs and pickups of that thing. Pursuant to section fifty-one point zero, thing, home occupations shall not generate traffic, um, above that, which is normally occurs in a residential neighborhood or create a parking problem. By restricting the customers, to a single customer at one time by appointment, the applicant can provide sufficient parking and restrict the volume of traffic within the neighborhood attributable to this use. The applicant has not proposed any signage at this time, but she would be limited to the requirements of the Land Development Code, which are listed here in the staff report, um, which basically, it's a one, it's a one-square-foot sign that they're allowed to have, that would be a post, uh, affixed directly adjacent to the door of where the actual use is going to be, so that portion that she's gonna construct, she may have a sign, a small sign there, and that's the only signage that would be allowed on the property. Uh, the applicant will not be allowed any outdoor display of goods or outdoor storage of any kind, the applicant, um, and the use is proposed to be entirely within the structure, no accessory building will be used, and the character of the structure and the property is to remain residential in nature. Essentially, this is a request, the primary use remains residential, there is a secondary accessory use allowed as part of this, that would be this home occupation, so the, the primary use remains residential with that secondary use that allows very specifically, within the conditions that you define tonight, if you were to approve this application, that allowance for the home business. Um, the proposed use is consistent with the LDC in section fifty-one point oh-three, however, staff is proposing several restrictions, including the number of animals on-site at any one time, volume of traffic at any one time, and that all parking be accommodated on-site. The pet, pet sitting use is consistent with home occupation section of the LDC and compatible with the neighborhood residential use. The proposed home occupation will not change the principal character of the structure as residential, and the applicant is proposing in addition to the existing home to provide for sufficient area between the existing home and the detached garage for the use. The home site consists of three fifty-foot wide lots, the proposed home occupation will occur in the center of the three lots within the structure, and there will be no visible evidence of the home occupation from the outside of the structure. The proposed use does not conflict with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tarpon Springs Comprehensive Plan. The conditional use will not, it will occur on a development, a developed site, no environmental or historical resources will be impacted, this is outside of the historic district, it's not within that historic district. No adverse impact to adjourning property values is anticipated as a result of the conditional use request being approved. No change in the existing level of service is required to accommodate the proposed use, there isn't gonna be a sufficient, an increase in water, sewer, or garbage usage, where we would have to look at, you know, additional concurrency requirements. Um, the subject property is developed site and has, is adequately served currently by the public utilities. Staff is recommending approval of resolution two thousand and sixteen dash, dash sixteen, requesting a conditional use to allow a home occupation for pet sitting office at twelve oh six East Boyer Street in the R seventy A single-family residential zoning district, subject to the following conditions. The use is restricted to the care of no more than nine cats at one time, there is no retail sales of goods allowed on the property. The pet sitting, the pet sitting office is limited to a maximum of twenty-five percent of the floor area of the residence, the home occupation is to be conducted entirely within the residence, there shall be no exterior evidence of the home occupation. Customer traffic to the property must be by appointment only to limit the traffic and parking impacts on surrounding property owners, all parking is to be accommodated on the subject property. Any proposed signage must be consistent with the L, with LDC fifty-one dash zero three K, which is the section under the conditional use that allows for that signage specific to those, to this particular use. And a building permit or approval from the city building department must be obtained for any changes or alterations made to the building. And with that, I can answer any questions that you might have. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, I understand they're within their rights to have this, but I'm concerned about the parking on the subject property. Are they gonna have like a parking lot there, in that front yard or on the side?
No, currently, the applicant actually has two parking pads, the detached garage has a parking space in front of it, and there's currently also, uh, an area right in front of the, of the, of the house that has what would be equivalent to approximately two parking spaces. So because this is gonna be by appointment only and restricted to one customer at a time, there is sufficient parking on that property currently to accommodate that. The, the whole reason for the parking requirement is to not have people parking on the street, because while that street may appear to be wide enough for parking on the street, having people coming to a house and parking on the street on a regular basis is gonna be really detrimental to the community, so she needs to accommodate all parking on that individual property, which is why that condition is on the, on the application.
They went to the property, I know, I've seen it, I've been there before, it is an oversized, a lot with the house on it, but I was concerned mostly about the parking, and I'd also like to know who is going to monitor the amount of cats and the parking?
Well, the restrictions, the parking restrictions and the number of cats are monitored through the, again, it's through the code enforcement department, we don't have an individual section in, in planning and zoning to administer your conditions. Were you to approve this application, if there was a complaint, they, it would be investigated by our code enforcement officer, and if she was found to be in violation at that time, they would go, they would take the proper procedures, that may up to include basically expunging, getting rid of this conditional use were you to approve it. So if there was a problem over time, as a result of any violations on this property, specific to this particular conditional use, um, were you to, to approve it, through our code enforcement processes, there is possibility that there would be punitive damages up to and including removing the conditional use allowance for that property.
I would like to have in the minutes, and if I have to make an emotion that it would be put in the minutes that code enforcement would be overseeing this. So in the future, if residents call, they can't say, well, if we have no, uh, you know, we can't go and enforce, because that's happened before. So I wanna make sure that the residents, if this should pass, have a protection, uh, set in for them also.
We can, we can certainly include that, that information in the minutes.
You, alright, please do. Uh, what was the other question I was gonna ask from that? Um, oh, I don't know how to word this. If this is approved, that means that people who buy property or homes in that area can come back to us with a conditional use for, uh, a shop or planted plant in a house. Like when you go through Georgia and North Carolina, and their homes, they have like sunrooms, you call them, and they do nothing but violets in little pots, people go up there to buy. You have, uh, jellies, people who do just jelly and things like that. Is that gonna open the door for individuals to buy property in that area and come back here to get in a, a conditional use and more or less have the same type of, uh, uh, background as this does, and we have no way to, to deny businesses?
Okay.
Because residents have bought their homes there, and they bought their homes knowing that no businesses can be allowed.
Okay.
This is what I'm concerned about.
Okay, let me, let me explain this code, this code section, because this is not a code section that many folks have taken advantage of in the city. We do have lots of home-based businesses in Tarpon Springs, but they're what's called addresses of convenience, where it's a very limited thing, there's not much business that happens there, it's mostly an office, they do their paperwork, that type of thing, they receive their mail there for the business. That's a different animal than this particular, this particular, um, type of application. This application is specific to certain uses, the code specifically allows for business offices, for arts and crafts, so what you're kinda talking about with the jellies and that type of thing, that's a stretch for an art, but it's also a home-based craft. Same thing with gardening is a home-based craft. What the language says for retail sales, which is the reason why this application specifically says that she cannot sell goods on the property, is what it says if you're going to do something like that and ask for a conditional use to do that in your, in your house, because they would have to come back through the same process that Mrs. Stern is coming through. Essentially, what it says is though, the goods that are sold on the property have to be created on the property. So if that is basically like an art studio or something like that, where they're creating art on the property, if they were painting on the property or that type of thing, they could sell those paintings from the property, if they're creating jellies and jams, they can sell those things from the property, however, there are some limitations on jellies and jams and anything that, um, is created, that is sold in the state for foodstuffs and that type of thing, there are some limitations there, um, on that, you have to use a commercial kitchen a lot of times, and you don't really have commercial kitchens.
I didn't know how to word it, but I wanted it.
But, yeah, but the violets are a good example, that's something that is grown specifically on the property, and yes, they could sell them. Now, the problem that you have is people would have to have, be coming into their houses to buy them, because there can be no outside display, no outside evidence of any kind, that somebody is selling violets or orchids out of their house, with the exception of that small sign that is allowed per the code, um, of one square foot essentially right by their door. So that's the only advertising they get, they don't get to put them out in the front of their yard, that type of thing, under a conditional use. Now, we do have properties here that allow, that are in what's called RO, that look like houses, but that, that zoning district specifically allows residential off, office uses. Something like that, you could do by conditional use retail sales there. That's a different animal than what you're dealing with here in this particular application. This is truly a, a residential neighborhood, the character of the use in the house has to remain residential in nature, that means no outside storage, which is why you see those restrictions in, in here, they can be no outside display, no outside advertising, none of that stuff right outside the home. Now, advertising can be done via the internet, can be done via hand flyers, it can be done at any, uh, any sort of different types of, 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 of social media, but there's no handing out of applications or any of that type of thing on the property, there's no physically stuff putting out there, there's no brochures out on the street, none of that stuff would be allowed, because all that is physically visible from the street, and there can be no physically visible advertising from the street, with the exception of that one little sign, which Ms. Stern at this point is not asking for.
Well, the reason I've gone into this, it explains a lot that there's been a lot of misconception, and this is gonna clear up a lot, because you could have a private home and have nine cats and all.
That's correct, because there is no limitation in Pinellas County on the number of cats you can have, and we do not have a local provision for the number of cats that you can have in any, any house, as your personal pets.
So really, they're in their right with this, so.
Any other questions for the staff from the board?
Not for me.
I've got a question, how'd you come up with nine, uh, as a maximum number?
We actually asked the applicant on how mu, how many cats that she was, that she was interested in doing, to find out where, where it lied, because I wanted to make sure it was in line. Nine tends to be, I mean, to me, that was a reasonable number for, based on the space that she was looking at, for the size of the, um, space that she's gonna keep these animals in, for them to have enough area to roam that they would be in a healthy condition. Because eight hundred and seventy-five square feet seems like a lot, but it's really not, once you start putting tables and things in there, and then boxes for these animals and areas for them to play, it, it starts, it starts getting very small and small and smaller. So nine cats seemed like a reasonable amount for the space that she's ac, she's actually asking for, for all of the things that these cats would need in that space, because the, the thing with this, this particular use is, they need to be confined just to that eight hundred and seventy-five square feet, if that's what, if the, any twenty, whatever the twenty-five percent of the house, they need to be confined just to that space. They're not roaming throughout, throughout the house, because that exceeds what's allowed by this conditional use, this conditional use says these animals will be in this twenty-five percent of the house and identifies specifically where that twenty-five percent is going to be. So as a result, the applicant will be limited, uh, on that space, on where, how many animals she can actually have at any given time, and again, that's the maximum number, that's not to say, based on this, this is a new business, the, Ms. Stern hasn't really, she's really thought this through, and she has a really good business plan, she's actually provided me a lot more app, information than I've had in the past for these conditional uses, for, for this type of use outside of this community, she's got a really well-thought-out business plan, but again, she does not know if she'll have nine cats on there all the time, or if she'll have some cats here and actually be going out to other people's, um, houses to, you know, service those animals that are part of, that are also part of her business, because she's also gonna be pet sitting out in the community in other people's homes. Many people do that with their cats, they don't wanna board them, they don't wanna bring them to a facility, so they'll actually hire somebody to come in and just, you know, service the, the things a cat needs, you know, clean up their litter box, make sure there's plenty of food, water, and that type of thing, play with them for a little while, and then, you know, she would go on to the next person, similar to like a dog walker, in this case, just for cats.
Hey, um, you mentioned something about a sign, like the limitations is about a, a foot?
Yeah, it's one square foot.
Okay, one square foot, so.
Yeah, it's like a, it's exactly like that, it's a placard, is what it is.
Is that six by six, then?
Yes.
Okay, and it would just be up by the door, if that was something that was.
It can't be more than, I mean, it's super specific, it can, if you're gonna have one, it has to be no bigger than this, it's not illuminated, so there's no sign or light that can be projected onto it at all.
Lights or anything?
It's not backlit, and, um, it can only be, it has to be within two feet of that door, of that front door.
Thanks.
On the wall, too, it has to be against the wall.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, this time, uh, we'd like to hear from the applicant, if the applicant would like to, uh, come forward.
Right here.
Please state your name and address when you get to the podium, please.
My name is Tina Stern, and currently I'm at thirty thirty, even so long, in Holiday.
Okay, do you want to say anything in addition to what, uh, our staff has reported regarding your application?
The only thing that I wanna say is, but the whole purpose of my even attempting to do this endeavor is to try to be more available, to stay home to take care of my husband, who has some significant physical challenges, so, right now, I work sixty, seventy hours a week, he's home alone. He doesn't work, he doesn't drive. He's only gonna get worse, not better. So I'm hoping that I can do some work from home, some work outside of home, be more available for him. I'm not looking to generate, you know, a million-dollar business, I just wanna make a living so I can stay home a little bit more. Um, I've been in the veterinary business for twenty-five years, I think I work in the cleanest veterinary clinic in Pinellas County. Um, I have letters of recommendation from both veterinarians that I've worked for as far as how I, how I keep my work environment, how I keep my home environment. People, cats come to my home, don't, you know, we have animals, I work in the veterinary industry, I have my own animals, but I'm very particular about the housing and the, and the cleanliness of it, so.
Are you, are you familiar with the, uh, recommendations that, uh, the staff included in his report as far as the restrictions on your conditional use?
Do I understand the restrictions?
Yeah, the restrictions that she read when she was talking about, uh, being limited to the nine cats and the no retail sales and that sort of thing.
Absolutely, I don't intend to do retail of anything, and, and the, the number nine came up, because, I don't know if you can tell on my drawing or not, that's really all, all the room that I have enclosure-wise, I can't let them run loose altogether and expect them to mingle, I want them to have their separate spaces. them to mingle. I want them to have their separate spaces, and I want them to be bigger than everybody else offers in, in the hospitals. And even in my hospital, they're pretty generous. They're four by four squares, or kennels. And I wanna do like a four by eight space, so they don't feel like they're in a box. They have like a little bedroom. You know, they have their own space, so. It needs, it doesn't need to be huge to, to accomplish what I need to, to do.
Okay, let me ask if any of the board members have any questions for the applicant?
Are you in this currently at your house in Holiday?
I don't have the space to do it. That's why we're moving. We've sold our home, and we have to move, and we're buying, and if this all works out, it'll work out great. If not, we're gonna be in a bit of a mess, but.
You may be called the cat, the cat house.
As long as it's a clean, clean cat house, you know, that's okay. I understand the, the stigma that goes with having a lot of cats and odor and uncleanliness and all that, but I couldn't be more opposite of that. I am very particular.
Well, it's a challenge, especially with the, you have boofy boxes.
It's all amount of effort. If you, if you put in the effort and the time, you can do it.
Any other questions for the applicant from the board? Thank you, Ms. Stern, if you wanna have a seat. At this time, we'd hear from the public. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application? If so, stand to the podium, please. If you come up to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Which one of these things works? This one?
That one sounds.
My legal name is Virginia Naeness Phillips. I go by Ginger, and I live at one 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 four East Boyer Street, the next block, same side, west of this property. I came here when I saw the sign outside, when we walked our dog by it, thinking, oh my lord, they're gonna put a kennel in here. The barking's going to be insane. Obviously, no barking. I know this property very well. My grandparents bought Kitty Corner across the street from that in thirty-eight. They knew Lowell and Lyle, Lois and Lyle, who built this property, and I'm real familiar with the inside of it, because I recently kept track of it for the current owner who's selling it, who is a distant relative of sorts. So I came here to come, to speak against it. However, I, I've moved back to this neighborhood. It's a working-class neighborhood. It's not deed-restricted, which is lovely. Across the street from me is a home, it's the next block up. It was a beauty parlor, and it has extensive parking across the street. Didn't stop me from building there. Hasn't appeared to stop anybody from buying houses. Certainly not the guy who just bought it and is fixing it up. This doesn't seem out of the ordinary, and actually, once the contract was on it, we walked by and said, well, why didn't we think about, you know, getting this and expanding ourselves? I don't see that it'll hurt the neighborhood. So, I, I know there are concerns, but I speak in favor of letting this happen. And thank you for the chance to read through the application. Thank you.
If you'll stay there for just a moment, in case any of the board members have a question of you. Any board members have a question of this speaker? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in favor of the application? Yes, sir. If you'd come to the podium?
I live at twelve east, or twelve oh three East Boyer Street, directly across the street from it.
And your name, sir?
Patrick Sonsby. Like, like her, I came curious about being a dog kennel, barking all hours. I see no problem. I welcome it, so.
Thank you, sir. Anyone have a question of this gentleman? Thank you very much. Anyone else care to speak in favor of the application, or in support of it? At this time, then, we will ask anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application to come to the podium. Please state your name and address when you get up there at the podium, please.
Jacqueline Evans, twelve oh six East Lime Street. My only concern is, is this going to allow more people to bring more businesses into our area? Sixteen years ago, I was told that I could not have a home-based business in my home, because of, like she said, the traffic and people coming to and from my house. Mine was a one-on-one business. I had bought a sixteen dot thousand dollar machine, quilting machine, and now it sits there, because I can't have a business. Now I'm too old to have the business. So my concern is just more businesses coming into. I understand with the cats, it's not like it was gonna be with the dogs. So I'm okay with that part. I just don't want more businesses brought into our residential area.
I think this, well, I know the city has had provisions for home-based occupations for some time, and it's very restrictive, obviously, because we wanna keep the residential character of neighborhoods. And so that's, it's very limited, the kind of businesses that can be operated in a home, in a residential setting. And I don't know about the particulars of the one that you applied for, or who you asked, but I, I know that law's been in the books, you know, since at least the eighties. I was on the city commission back in the eighties, and I know that we did have a home occupation conditional use, where anyone would have to come before the board, like this applicant, to get permission to conduct a home occupation, if it fits within this, within the ordinance. And so, your question is whether or not this opens up the neighborhood to all kinds of businesses? No. The, the application of anyone would have to come before the board, and then before the Board of Commissioners. It would have to fit within the scope of the ordinance, and it's not just any business.
When I had called, I never got past a phone call, because I have, like I said, a quilting machine. It's a sewing machine, a very large sewing machine, but it's a sewing machine. And it would be done on a one-on-one basis. Someone would bring me a quilt. I would quilt it. They would come and pick it up. And I was told, no, definitely not. So I never even got past a phone call when I called.
Well, I'm sorry that maybe you didn't pursue it, because it may have been, someone may have given you improper advice. Maybe they didn't quite understand the nature of the machine and that, and the business. But I'm sorry you didn't pursue that further, because it sounds like, from what you're saying and describing, that it probably would fit within the scope.
Sixteen years ago, the zoning was so different. When he was on the board and I was on the board, there was one meeting that went to five o'clock in the morning on zoning for this city. I'll never forget that. Because of the zoning to protect the citizens. So that many years back, things were different than what they are today. And zoning ordinances have been changed and changed and changed through the years to accommodate the community.
Okay, I just never pursued it any further. But I have a sixteen thousand dollar sewing machine that is expensive hobby. And I'm, I guess I am for, go ahead to, for the, for them to have their kennel.
We appreciate your comments, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak either in favor of or in opposition to the application? If you'd wanna come to the podium, please. And please state your name and address.
Judith Davis, twelve eighteen East Lime Street in Tarpon, and we're one street over. I'm just concerned with this provisional granting that you're doing for someone. Is this going to change our zoning? So it's...
That's a good question, ma'am. We're here on an application for conditional use. That means, in the zoning laws, every zone has certain permitted uses, where people by right can do, you know, in your sense, to live in a house, it's a residential zone. But in each zone, there are conditional uses, which have to be approved specifically for the proposed use. So no one has a right, in this case, to have a pet sitting service on, on a residential property there in your neighborhood. But the law does allow the person to apply for a conditional use for a home occupation. And there are restrictions that you've heard that the city is gonna impose on her, as far as, on this conditional use. And so it's with conditions that a person can be granted, you know, some use, but it's within the scope of the law.
Is there any effect on the value of the homes that are there?
Well, it doesn't appear, well, I don't think we can answer that, because I don't know if anyone's here qualified to talk about the value of the homes. But the design of the zoning law is to try to preserve values in the homes, in the neighborhoods, obviously. And that's why the scope of a conditional use in a residential area is such that it shouldn't impact the neighbors, as far as their enjoyment of their home and in the value of the home.
And how about the children in the area? There are a lot of young children that play in here. How many cars do you want going in and out of the area? School buses meet there, and...
And that's why, you notice that there is some restriction about only one person at a time. I mean, if you have nine cats, there's not gonna be a whole lot of traffic, I don't think, generated, because it is limited in scope. And only one person at a time. And parking would be on the driveway or on the pad that's already there, not in the street.
I just keep seeing things from nineteen creeping up on us and creeping up on us.
I understand.
And when you've put so much into a home, and you wanna make, you wanna stay there, you don't want your area changing around you, so that it's impossible for you to stay there. Not that this would. I'm just saying, well, is this gonna lead to other things?
Well, I don't have a crystal ball, but, but the zoning closer to nineteen would probably have a different zoning. I don't know where the dividing line is. Obviously, along nineteen, that's highway business, and I don't know how far back it goes.
There is, there is some intrusion into, not into this neighborhood, but like, right up by nineteen, on Lime, on Boyer, on several of those streets, there are parcels that are zoned. A matter of fact, there's a church on the corner there that goes all the way back. The block goes all the way back to the back street, that that's all highway business. So there is highway business there that hasn't been tapped, at this point, for highway business, at necessarily the intensity that it can be. I don't think that you're gonna see that happening right this, right this moment. But again, you are correct, Chairman Vincent, we, none of us have a crystal ball, and it is possible for that to happen. But actually, coming into the neighborhood, it's all R seventy A around here. Lime Street is the same way as the, as, as Boyer Street is in this area. This is mid-block of, of that, of that area. So as a result, it, again, would have to be another conditional use that comes before this board, and then goes to the Board of Commissioners for final approval. And it's such a limited scope to actually fit somebody into this home-based business criteria, that it's really hard to find a use that will fit.
You have any other questions, ma'am, or any other questions you want to ask us?
Those are my concerns.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments by the public?
Where are your letters? Were you gonna present?
I got them right here. I'll add, we'll add these to the record, so that when they, when this application moves on, if it, if it does approve, get approved tonight and moves on, we will add these to the public record that will go to the commission.
At this time, the public portion of the hearing is closed, and now the board will deliberate. Are there any motions?
I'll make a motion that we approve, apartment six dash thirty-eight, level sixty, Boyer Street, as it stands.
Second.
Ms. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Is the motion with the conditions?
Yes, yes, as it stands, yes.
Yes. Okay, the application did, did pass, and it will go before the Board of Commissioners at their, I guess, their next meeting?
It's on the seventh, actually. Their next meeting's tomorrow night. It would be June seventh.
June seventh, okay. The next item on our agenda is, we'll go back up to number three.
Okay.
That's application sixteen dash oh six, annexation for Peter Fisher at sixteen oh nine Dixie Highway.
Thank you. This, again, is for an annexation of approximately point zero one two four acres into the city of Tarpon Springs, providing for a residential urban future land use on the Tarpon Springs future land use map, and providing for R sixty or two-family residential zoning district on the official zoning map of Tarpon Springs. The applicant and owner of the property is Peter Fisher, and Mr. Fisher is actually asking for this annexation to access utilities. He had a failing septic system that had an issue, that caused a problem on his well on the property. And being that this property is so small, it's just better for everyone around that he actually get on to utilities and do away with his septic system and his well. So as a result, Mr. Fisher, under an emergency action, is actually already receiving our utilities on a temporary basis. He, the ordinance allows for a temporary connection for folks until they can complete the annexation. His annexation's kinda gotten a little delayed as a result of our low staffing at this particular point. We're trying to move it forward for him, and essentially, at this particular time, staff really doesn't have anything else unless the board has questions on this specifically, because it's consistent with all of the reviewing criteria for a voluntary annexation. It's an emergency situation when this application came in, so staff is not, is recommending approval at this point, unless there's specific questions about this, since it's pretty much a city-sponsored activity at this point. Since we're on, working on this on behalf of Mr. Fisher, unless you have any other questions, I'm not really gonna go into too much detail, because it really is an emergency situation. He come, he's coming into our city. He'll now be part of our, the city, and subject to all of our services. So he'll get trash and water and sewer and all those, those things in his area.
And tax.
And taxes.
Usually, when we have an annexation issue, in the backup materials, we usually have a map that delineates where the city limit is. And I didn't see that here, on this one exhibit that points out the subject property.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
On the where the city limit is. It does state in the page one of the staff report under Roman numeral two, subsection C, where it says surrounding zoning and existing uses. They're all county except to the south. And I don't know, is that sixteen oh one? Is that in the city? That's the property?
No, it's actually, it's actually, it's not directly contiguous, but you had another one in this particular area that was of the same situation, that is actually on the block below here. It's fifteen, it's five eight, it's five eight seven and five eight one. And it was the same situation. We're having some issues in this particular area. It's one of those things that we're gonna be researching to do a wholesale review of the utilities in that area and working with the county. As a result of your city code, he must annex in in order to get services. So as a result, rather than just keeping him on a temporary hold, that's why the cities chose to go forward with the voluntary annexation, even though it's not directly, directly adjacent. And we've had the situation in this area directly below, because it's the same situation on five eight nine, on five eight seven and five, I think it's five eight one. Both of those properties are separated from the city boundary as well.
Doesn't the city provide fire service to those areas that are not in the city limits? If they're within a fire district, it might be on the city limit?
That's correct. The fire services and the, and the police services are already being offered in this area. So this property would then be served by those services as well.
And why do they have to annex? Can't water services and sewage be done the same way?
The, by annexing into the city, Mr. Fisher did not have to pay the twenty-five percent premium for those services, which is the reason why he chose to annex in. It's actually, the cost of annexing into the city is only five hundred dollars, where his connection fees have a premium of twenty-five percent, and his monthly utilities also have a twenty-five percent premium, as long as he's outside the city limits, which is the reason why he has chosen to do a voluntary annexation.
Okay, so he could have the, the services, but he would just pay more for it?
Correct. He could have recorded a restrictive covenant on the property that at the time the boundary became close, he could annex in, but he chose to go through a voluntary annexation. And since there's been ones in the area that have had the same situation, staff is supporting this.
That's a lot of money.
Well, yeah, it may end up being a lot of money, but I, I certainly have a problem with the annexation of an enclave, because it, well, first of all, the law doesn't allow it. And I know a convenience might say, well, let's go ahead and do it. But I would rather see the city change its policies regarding the services that are charges for, for these folks, rather than make them go through this and have an enclave, because we don't have any really adjoining property with the city. So that would, in my mind, not be contiguous and would create an enclave. So that would, in my mind, not be contiguous and would create an enclave. So I don't believe that, you know, it's a proper way to do it.
I had the same concern and question what Mr. Vincent does about the other properties around this and really how the code specifies annexing properties that are may, I wasn't positive where the city line was too. So I'm just piggybacking on Mr. Vincent. Just as a concern. I don't know if that's necessarily something that I would be against, but at the same time, I think I just need to be a little more educated on it.
Okay.
I'll ask your chairman, who's the attorney also, and we have her here. Isn't this in a sense considered spot zoning?
Well, yes and no. Yes, in the sense that there's no city limits in the, in the general vicinity, but no, because it's consistent with this, the county's plan. The zoning district that you're, that you're bringing them into is consistent with the R four zoning district, which is the county zoning district. And the land, future land uses are the same. There are, there are U is the same as our RU in this particular area.
I have been drilled in the head so much about spot zoning. That's what I don't care about this one. I'm afraid. No, I truly believe that this is going to cause some problems in the future. And I truly believe that we will be caught on the line on this one, or anything like this. If it's not together, I don't feel that we should do it because it's just oppressive.
Well, it's really not spot zoning.
I look at it.
Because it's the same use. It's the same kind of use. And that's what we're talking about in zoning. But as far as annexation, the issue is, is the property contiguous to the city limits?
And to me, that's a lot of annexation.
And I'm, as I-
And I know that's, one has to start for the others to come in and do it.
And I empathize with the, the applicant having the concern and needing services. And I'm just sorry that the city, you know, can't find a better way to provide services to those areas up there that, you know, are on septic and really ought to be connected to our sewers.
This is something that the city is going to have to look into wholesally because their service and water area boundaries really need to be evaluated with a long-term vision. The, looking at, you know, cherry picking particular properties really isn't the best course of action for annexation. Unfortunately, under the way your code was written in ninety-seven when this was changed. And I'm not sure what the history of it. I've kind of been told anecdotally. It was a result of the water bonding and some of the things that were done back then to provide for, you know, additional monies for the system to be, you know, useful in the future. For planning purposes and that type of thing is that people would need to come in. This is one of those things that the planning department inherited as a result of the building division, you know, saying that we need to connect to these, these services and then providing the applicant with this avenue. Generally, this planning staff would have given the gentleman a restrictive covenant to explain to him that, no, you won't be responsible for paying taxes and that type of thing. You will just have to pay the surcharge on the services. But planning and zoning unfortunately inherits things sometimes that we have to try to make work through the process. So if the board doesn't feel that they can support this application, we certainly understand that and that's fine. It's just, at this particular point, it staffs me the, the recommendation. And while we do necessarily agree with you got, what you're saying, it is something that over time, we're going to have to look at.
About six years ago, or maybe a little longer, there was a big discussion on spot annexation. I use the word spot zoning. To me, it looks like the same thing, but with spot annexation.
That's with marker twenty-five, channel marker twenty-five?
I forgot what it was, but they didn't follow through with it.
Oh, okay.
And, and, but there was quite a discussion. I don't know if they still have it in minutes or something and what was recommended at that time, but they never acted on it. So I don't know, you know, if any of that would help you or not.
What, what happens if we decide not to go with this? And this man is already getting services from the city. So that means automatically he's going to be charged that extra amount of money?
Well, there, the way that the language reads is the person can be temporarily hooked up to the services for, while they're going through this process. And at the time, if the, if the annexation is to fail, at the time of the failure, technically the, we would, we would cut off the services or we would have to, he would have to pay that additional twenty-five percent. Now, whether it would be on the connection fees as a total or just on his monthly service bill, that'd be something that I'd have to talk to the city manager about. I'm not sure how that they would handle that. I don't know that they've had that happen. That's just what the legislation says. The, as a result, there is a process by which an individual, an individual in a situation where they have a polluted well, or they have a septic system that they can't replace because, you know, they need a state variance, that type of thing, can petition to the state and then the state can actually file an action to the community, the closest community that actually has utilities if utilities are available. Utilities are available in this neighborhood. It's just they haven't been connected until, you know, somebody asks for those connections. So there's a couple of different questions on what would actually be the result of this. Right now, he would continue to receive those services because we'd move this. If you denied the application tonight, we still would move it forward to the board for their approval or denial. That doesn't mean that Mr. Fisher's going to lose his, his, his utilities tonight. It's something that we would have to work with him on another alternative or what, what we're going to do moving forward. And we probably would be looking to the city attorney's office to give us some guidance on what's the most appropriate course of action.
Are they going to come back with a recommendation?
Or, and what might also come back would be, I know that we're kind of talking about at the staff level, you know, looking at those regulations and how those regulations operate in general. That might be something that gets fast-tracked as a result of this application not move, not moving in a positive direction. I, I can't, that'd be something I'd be speculating on. I know it's something that we're kind of looking about and talking about. We've had conversations with the city's attorney's office on what makes sense going forward as the policy for this type of situation resulting in annexation.
He may not have any choice at all because if you cannot replace that septic system, which you can't yet.
It's such a small lot, it'd be really hard to, to replace the septic system on this property in this location. So he'd have to come up, there would have to be some other alternative, whether that meant just connecting, paying the additional fee, then that's one of those things that he would, you know, he'd be subject to.
And then we're making people go into septic around town that have septic right now, because I have a relative that just said that, to go on the sewer because it's mandated. So you have neither justification in all of this.
Correct. When you go, what's, what's happened at the state level is the type of septic systems that are now acceptable are a different type of septic system. They don't fit every criteria that the old septic systems used to fit. And as a result, and it really, that's from a water quality. We're trying to protect our environment and, and fix the impaired waters that we've created as a result of the older septic systems. So as a result, that's the reason why the state's taking a little bit harder line on the septic issue. As a result, you have folks that just can't qualify anymore for a septic system because put in a performance-based system will not work with the way their property is set up.
I, I think we all understand that and the need for improving the environment with having better waste disposal. The issue I have is the law requires for annexation that the property be contiguous. And I, I'm surprised this even got this far because it's, it's clearly not contiguous. And even though it's convenient maybe to have this passed, I don't think, I don't think it's legal for us to do that. I don't think it's legal, legal for the board to do that under the, the circumstance. A great justice of the US Supreme Court, Oliver Wendell Holmes, said one time, hard cases make bad law. I think this is describing where this would fit in. This, you know, we all feel sorry for this applicant. We all know that there's a need, but the law is clear. And I think the board is required to follow the law.
And I don't disagree.
Let me ask, just, nothing to do with how the outcome is going to be. On the Board of Commissioners, sometimes it's a two-two, it's a dead issue. And it goes, it, it just dies. It doesn't go any further.
Right.
If it was a two-two here and this just dies, does it still go to the commission?
Well, no matter how we vote, the board can vote however they want. We're an advisory committee.
No, my question was if it was a dead issue here, do you go ahead and send it on to the Board of Commissioners?
How, how long ago did these other two?
I believe your rules of procedure state that if it's a dead issue, then it's considered a denial of recommendation and it moves forward to the Board of Commissioners.
It does move forward to them. That's what's my question.
As a denial of recommendation, correct.
Now, that was my, not my question. I didn't know how it worked.
They would, no matter what happens here, basically, it goes to the commission.
It still goes to them. Okay.
Any other comments or questions by the board? Does anyone care to make a motion?
I move that we deny application sixteen oh-six annexation with, with the comments made on not having a property next to it into the city limit and the questions that have been brought up by the board. Does anyone want to add anything to that?
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Ms. Protos?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number four. Application sixteen dash thirty-six, amendment to the city code of ordinances. There's a request to amend the code of ordinances to address parking of boats or boat trailers.
Yeah, this actually came from the city attorney's office and it's addressing an issue that I guess has been ongoing through the code enforcement area. They've been providing tickets and things to folks for boat parking. And there's not clear clarification in the ordinance or is there's conflicting information in the ordinances? As a result, they're trying to clean up that language and make some changes so that everything is consistent. As a result, that's what this memo from Jay has basically tendered. The ordinance that's actually attached here is where the language actually is laid out for what will change. And I can read that into the record. They're changing fifty-six dash twenty-six, item A. They're adding, nothing contained herein alters or amends the provisions of statute eighteen dash fourteen, parking of large vehicles and trailers in residential districts or appendix A forty-two, parking of recreational vehicles in residential areas. Under section C of that, proof of the city of Tarpon Springs residency requirements will be included. And then they're taking out a section of code with the verifications of the types of registrations that you can use because they just, they want to prove residency when getting permits to utilize this. Again, residence, current registration, proving licensure and owner of the trailer that is being permitted. This is to essentially allow for permits to be issued. Section two of this talks about eighteen fourteen, again, to make it consistent, parking of large vehicles and trailers in residential districts. They're taking out the references to Craig Park. There had been a provision to allow for a special permit for boat parking in Craig Park. Not that it's ever really been utilized, but that it existed. So they're taking that information out because it's really not appropriate to have boat parking unless it's a designated area in a park. And this was just basically within the park, parking area for the park. So they've cleaned up that information on the, you know, what's allowed as far as boat parking near the boat ramp in Craig Park. They've added an exception to provide it herein to be, which is no detached trailers or semi-trailers, regardless of length, shall be parked in public street right-of-way municipal parking area in any residentially zoned district. This was a big one, I guess. That's what's happening is folks are parking their boat trailers in the right-of-way and just like leaving the trailer so that the car goes, the boat's not there, and it's just the trailer sitting there. And so that's where the majority of the issues have been resulting. So again, that's why they're going through this process. And it looks like that's the bulk of the changes for this particular ordinance. And I can answer, I can try to answer any questions that you might have. Unfortunately, a lot of this was going on before I got here, so I don't have a lot of history. I've kind of tried to pull it from, pull it from folks, but I can try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for the staff?
I've got a question. We have a group of individuals that come down, I believe, from Canada annually. And they have, I don't know, their canoes or kayaks, some type of rowing boat of some sort. And then they parked their trailer next to the tennis courts, I believe, pretty close to the boat ramp in Craig Park. So that's going to be now against our code for happening and they're going to have to find another spot, I'm assuming.
That's-
Based on something like, something like that would fall into that, right?
I think that that's exactly probably one of the situations that you had happening is because when those trailers and stuff get left there, when they go to pull out, if it's wet or something like that, and they, when they come out, you know, they do some destruction in the public parks. So as a result, you know, they're trying to eliminate having restoration issues and those type of things come up as a result of people parking boat trailers where it's really not appropriate to park them. You need to be on a hard, prepared service, surface in an appropriate area. And they want to limit, you know, parking on public boat ramps so that everyone can access them. The idea is you guys have a, have boat, public boat ramps, you want everybody to be able to have access to them at any given time. When you leave a trailer sit there for however long it sits there, it really restricts the use of those, those ramps and things for other people's use. And they're meant to be for the entire public.
And in residential areas where they're like on Bay Shore and areas of Riverside, people leave their boat and trailer right on the right-of-way. And if you had to swerve their car, you're going to hit that boat and trailer. There's no place to go. So this will take care and clean that up also, you know, these big boats and trailers that they just leave there. So that would fall under all of this.
That's correct.
Boy, code enforcement's going to be busy.
They can have the boat and the boat trailer on their property if it is away from the public, or the-
That's correct. The provision that actually that they're referring to here, that section forty-two of appendix A. Appendix A is your land development code, you know, called appendix A here. It's appendix A to the city code, but it is your land development code. Forty-two is the RV or recreational vehicles, whether it's an actual RV or a boat. It doesn't really define. RV is defined as any type of recreational vehicle. It could be a ski-doo, it could be whatever. As a result, that section's going to remain pretty much unchanged as a result of this. So yes, you can park your boat, your recreational vehicle, subject to the conditions in the residential neighborhood under that section. It has to be set back so far. It's got to be out of the front yard. If it's in the front yard, it has to be physically on the driveway. If you have a circular driveway, it can be on your circular driveway portion if you want to do that. In the rear, you know, depending upon the type of facility that you have, where you locate it, how close you locate it, you may need fencing and that type of thing. So the provisions are pretty, pretty restricted in, in your residential districts already. And that section's not really changing as a result of this.
So if I have a circular driveway and I pull my boat and my trailer on there and I also have a little pad, but it's not really a pad, it's just stones, and now I keep an extra boat trailer over here, that's considered a driveway over here that's just like rocks and thing? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, you can have a separate part of your driveway that is crushed stone, shell, or another alternative, which doesn't necessarily have to be a hard surface because your driveway doesn't necessarily have to be a hard surface. As long as it's approved by our folks in the building development division, it can be of an alternative surface, whatever that they deem alternative as reasonable, okay? And as long as you can meet the setback requirements from your adjacent property owner, when you put in that crushed stone, yes, you can park in your front yard, subject to the provisions. The code does allow for that, subject to the provision, as long as it is on a driveway. Now, if there's an extension of your driveway, then that's what it is. It's an extension of your driveway. So there may be a separate area that's crushed stone or something that's kind of attached to your driveway. But it would have to physically be attached to that driveway somehow.
What Mr. Carr was talking about, those, what do you call them? That they put in the bayou paddles.
Yeah.
And they take them out, stack them over by the tennis courts. At one point, when you go over the little bridge off of Martin Luther King, the city property there is like a little island and they've been putting them in there. Is that, will that be legal or illegal?
It depends on whether or not it's deemed park and/or whether or not it's public property. If it's not public property, if it's private property, that's a different, that's a different, different animal. If it's a public property, then they may be subject, they'll be subject definitely to the provisions of this, of this section. So that may restrict the use of that.
Because I've seen it there before and I just wonder.
If it's physically public property, that's what's being regulated here.
So if it's like along the bayous, up against the road, on the grass part between the mangroves and the road, that's going to be a no parking area?
As long as it's public property. If it's private, it's a different story. And you do have ports of the-
Connected to a truck though? Is it still, or is it still deemed not?
It says trailer. It doesn't say truck, so I don't know.
So if the truck and trailer, I mean, if it's still together and unhooked, I know, I understand if it's unhooked that it's- I know, I understand if it's unhooked, that it's, it's, that's the part that's falling in here, but I'm just trying to get clarification. Is it referred to the truck and trailer or is it just the trailer?
That's really-
Because that's what, the way I read it, it just is just trailer.
That's really good question for the attorneys who wrote the language.
The provisions within the ordinance changes, the, the main thing was to rectify the internal inconsistencies within the different ordinances that had to do with boats and trailers. So it doesn't, the, the changes to the ordinances that are before you now don't deal with trucks and trailers. It just deals with the trailer and the boat itself. So these ordinances are only governing the trailer, which has to be registered and has to be permitted. So a registered trailer, if they're not registered, they're going to get a citation for that anyways. So a registered trailer, right. Attac, but in the attached trailer, semi-trailer in excess of twenty-two feet. That just deals with the specific twenty-two feet. So these just have to do with the registered, the, the changes, that was, that's not a change. The changes are only to the inconsistencies having to do with either recreational vehicle or the trailer that's being towed by the vehicle. Everything else is remaining the same. I don't know if that answered your question?
Okay, so I mean, it's, so a truck with a boat behind it or a boat trailer parked in the public right-of-way or public street wouldn't fall into this classification then?
It, it's already in, it's already in your code and it's already regulated in your code. It's not a portion that's being changed.
Okay.
I don't know whether or not, and that's up to code enforcement to enforce it or not, but it's already in your code to prevent that type from, of happening in specific areas.
Because they do on Pineapple, they'll put their boat in at the ramp and they'll-
Yeah, well, there's no other, you have to, there's no other parking.
Well, there is provisions for loading and unloading. There is provisions of standing, you know, parking or left standing in connection with the aid of an immediate performance of service. And there is parking left standing as a result of mechanical breakdown. So there is some provisions there, but there's nothing specifically in this section, at least right here. And other, could be another portion that I, I don't have here. But there's nothing here specifically that says that you can stand and leave your vehicle in the public right-of-way with your boat trailer attached. Whether your vehicle is attached and your boat trailer is attached, or there's nothing that says that you specifically can do that. Um, so-
Or can't.
Or can't.
And that, that's not being changed one way or the other within the, these three sections of the code.
Okay.
Does that help?
Any other questions?
I think we might have confused him more than we helped him, but okay, we tried.
No further question?
I was going to say, I just want to be clear that, that what, basically the changes to the ordinance were that there was complaints through quote, code enforcement, that there are three different sections of the city's code that regulate boat trailers and boats and parking on the ramps or various other things to where you could cite somebody under one for a violation, but a different portion of your code said that that was permissible. So basically, what we've done is we've remedied those internal inconsistencies. We haven't changed anything that has to do with trucks and trailers being hooked up to each other. If that's something that you think should be addressed, you can certainly bring that up with, you know, with the city attorney's office and make a recommendation and we can talk to the board about that. But as far as what's before you now, it's just to remedy the internal inconsistencies to make code enforcement easier to do.
I don't know where it has to come from, but I'd certainly like to see something looked into the U-Haul trucks that are parked along right-of-way and the big cabs from the semis that these people do. Sometimes they sit out there two weeks at a time or three weeks at a time. And I don't know that they're allowed. And that's all over town. So I don't know if that's anything we have in anything in our zoning or-
Well, there's probably, probably just need to have complaints made to code enforcement to, to, if those are violation of code. I mean, you know, they don't do anything unless they've got a complaint.
Well, but the thing is, if we don't have it in anything, it needs to be brought forth and talked about.
Well, I guess if someone makes a complaint and the, and then the code enforcement says we don't have anything in there, then the city can do something about it.
Sometimes they come before us with recommendations that we don't think about and they, they think about to take care of the community.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Are we looking for a-
Yes, we're open for a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion for application number sixteen dash thirty-six, the amendment to the city code of ordinances as it stands.
I'll second it.
There's a motion, a second to approve the application, um, amend the code of ordinances sixteen dash thirty-six. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call please.
Ms. Protos?
Yeah.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Okay, and that, it's approved? Well, just a minute, we have a few other things. Be patient, pump the brakes.
Well, I'm watching.
Number six is staff comments.
I have only one comment, thank you, Jacob. That's my, that's my one comment, thank you for coming tonight so that we had a quorum so at least we could move forward in some of the applications. I appreciate your help.
Opportunity.
But other than that, staff does not have any other comments except for thank you to those who actually came to the meeting tonight. I appreciate that.
We don't like to delay people's matters because we don't have enough of a quorum. So yes, thank you very much for coming. Next is, uh, board comments, item number seven. St. Arnold?
I don't have any, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Carr? Ms. Botos?
Nope.
All right, then we're up for adjournment. Is there a motion adjourned?
Make a motion that we adjourn, it is now eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen, we are adjourned.
What time does the game start? Eight o'clock?
Yes, it already started. That's okay, I won't miss too much of it.
Not our, not our chairs, those chairs.
No, those are the same.
Just tell that they renovate.
Four is the same.
I think it's, I think it's two.
It's super hard for me when they just go and do, and they just go and say, we're going to take it that way.